Meetings called order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like at this time tonight, since it's 9:11, I'd like to take one moment, a moment of silence, just to consider the people that lost their lives, the first responders, military folks, and also fought for our local first responders too.
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher is absent this evening. Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
Counselor Wayne Reese Camp is absent this morning, or this evening, and Counselor Barry Scott?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the city council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the previous minutes? Seen none. Do I have a motion? Actually, seen none. Still stand approved. Consent calendar. We have the agenda as amended. You can see the proclamation was added down below, the board minutes from the library advisory board, and the easement agreement. Now do I have a motion?
I'd move for approval as amended.
Second? It's been moved and approved for the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. This month, September 2013, is disaster preparedness month, and I'm going to read this proclamation. Our city's going to be involved in revising the emergency plan and working on getting more awareness throughout the community. Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, along with other federal, state, local, private, volunteer agencies, is working to deter, prevent, and respond to all types of natural and technological emergencies. And whereas the city of Lebanon recognizes that we are all susceptible to such emergencies and demonstrates a broad-based need for citizens of Lebanon to have a plan for response and recovery in the event of an emergency. And whereas Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for our community to learn more about preparing for all types of emergencies. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to take preparedness measures before, during, and after a major emergency by making preparedness a priority in their schools, businesses, communities, and homes by following four simple steps. Build an emergency kit. Make an emergency plan. Be informed. Get involved. And whereas the Lebanon community is encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and review the Oregon Official Office of Emergency Management website, and that's at www.reddy.gov/beanformed, for preparedness information. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the city of Lebanon in support of National Preparedness Month, do hereby proclaim September 2013 Preparedness Month in the city of Lebanon, Oregon. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the Bike and Pedestrian Committee presentation by Linda Martin.
So, one of the goals that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Board had for the 2012-2013 academic, or, sorry, academic year, was to put out a survey with the goal in mind of identifying safety concerns and potential obstacles within the city of Lebanon for bicycle and pedestrian safety, and then to present those findings to the council. So, we'll go over the purpose, the survey details, the demographics from the survey that we received, a response summary, written concerns that we received from the survey, positive comments that we received, and then again, just kind of summarize everything. So again, the purpose, to identify bicycle and pedestrian safety concerns within Lebanon, identify factors preventing more bicycle and pedestrian use within Lebanon, and to utilize that data to assist us in creating goals for the advisory board for the 2013-2014. So, the survey, we ran it from May 1st to May 31st. We used Survey Monkey for it. We also put hard copies at Lebanon Police Station, the City Hall, Chamber of Commerce, and the Senior Center to facilitate anyone who is not on the Internet. And then we had it advertised within the Lebanon Express, local radio stations, the Chamber of Commerce, and then also word of mouth. We had 103 total responses. 69% of the responses were actually living in Lebanon. 49% work or attend school within Lebanon. So we recognized there could be a few people. Hopefully, we caught everybody who's not actually within Lebanon. 63% of the responders were female. You can see the age breakdown there. 24%, 17 to 35 years of age. 21%, 36 to 45. And 42%, 46 to 65 years old. And 13%, 65 and above. Mobility-limiting disability individuals, there were 9% responses. So, the result summary, 85% would like to bike more, and 88% would like to walk more within Lebanon. The significant and moderate obstacles that were listed on the survey were inadequate or missing bike lanes and/or off-street paths, personal security and safety, vehicles driving too fast, lack of bike parking, poor bikeway/walkway maintenance, obstacles blocking the path, and that was specific to biking. And then wide roads difficult to cross, that was specific to walking. I'm sorry, do I need to speak louder? The written concerns, so each question allowed for the survey taker to put written responses in. So these were the written concerns that came in. Bicycle and pedestrian education, both in that people are not, who are riding their bicycles are not necessarily obeying traffic signals the way that they should, but also, and pedestrians as well, using crosswalks correctly, but also with vehicle safety and education for bicycle right-ofaways. Inconsistent sidewalks and/or bike lanes. So there was quite a bit of concern in that sidewalks or bike lanes would inconsistently just end, and so paths were not necessarily consistent, and it was more difficult to run errands and have recreational purposes. Lack of curb ramps. This was specifically addressed by individuals on wheelchairs, senior citizens, and parents with strollers, saying that not knowing where the curb ramps were and were not, it made it difficult for them to plan their routes, and so sometimes they would end up walking or using their wheelchairs along the road, or the strollers along the roadway, because they didn't know where the curbs, curb ramps were going to be. So that was a major concern. And then also, just an idea for having more destination pathways. No bike lane through downtown, so that was kind of a big one. A lot of the bike routes through Lebanon, there are a lot of stop signs, and so, one person said it begs you to run the stop signs as a bicyclist and not obey the traffic signals properly. More bike racks outside of businesses. I will say, I rode my bike to work today, and I had to ride my bike home and then pick my car up here, because there's no bike rack actually outside of the travel station. Safe school routes, this was another large concern, especially along Russell Road, Russell Drive, and then I think there's one other school that was specified. So, vehicles driving too fast and/or no sidewalks or bike lanes for the children to get safely to school without being dropped off by their parents on a vehicle. And then bicycle theft, that's kind of common throughout everywhere, I think. The positives, there were quite a few positives. There was a lot of pride in the community. Cheadle Lake Trail, the Mark Slu Trail, there were several acknowledgements of the infrastructure improvements that the city of Lebanon has already made, so there was quite a bit of positive feedback also, and citizens acknowledging and thanking us for the improvements that have already been made. And then lots of people just saying that they're biking and walking for recreation, errands, and health. So, in summary, bicycle and pedestrian education was kind of at the top priority, continued infrastructure development, and then the issue of vehicles driving too fast when bicycle and pedestrians are around. With this information that we have given you, and we also submitted a separate report to, I think, the city engineers with specific concerns that were addressed within the summary, we're hoping that you can provide us with our next goals. So we've concluded all of the goals that we had originally created for ourselves, but we are your advisory board, and we would love either now or in the future to get some direction as to what you would like us to research and look into further to assist you. Any questions?
I have one. Oh, go ahead. I can't recall if our, if the Lebanon Transportation System Plan, I know it includes bike and pedestrian issues, does it get specific to any of the areas that your concerns have addressed?
This survey addressed more general concerns. I know the TSP plan, especially with some of the recommendations that we brought to the city council earlier this year, did include some of the improvements that would assist with this. I know, like, there's a sidewalk going in, at least partially on Russell Drive currently, or it's already in. So some of these things are being addressed, but this survey didn't ask people to identify specific problem areas.
Yeah, I was just asking if you had that done kind of across the board.
This was a little bit more general.
Okay.
I am one of the 63% of the women that took part in it. I loved, I loved to see that you guys were doing this survey, and I'm a bike rider in town, and so I want more businesses, we do, by the way, have a bike rack here, because I bike to council all the time when I'm healthy. But, but I, but I would like to see more bike focus on, like you said, on our, on our goals and our, you know, where is that focus on our, the transportation plan and those kinds of things. I know that when a business is doing remodeling and/or a new business is coming in, that is taken into consideration, and we make sure that there is bike parking now. And I appreciate that as a bike rider. I go someplace, it may make the difference between whether I go to your business or not. Because I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna park my bike a block away and then walk to your business. If, you know, I end up strapping it to a stop sign or something, I'm probably not supposed to do that, and I don't, for the record. But I do appreciate the work that you guys do, and I, and I would like to see the council focus on bike, bike and pedestrian being, especially as we get ready to become more of an education town, I think that there's going to be more demand for that kind of thing, a healthier society. So, I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you, and hopefully, we can hear some goals from you guys.
The wheelchair ramp part, of course, obviously, is something that I'm close to, because I'd really like to see our downtown area, within a couple of blocks on either side, have direct ramps, so that all the curbs and the sidewalks have ramps going to the downtown area. Because to go to downtown, I can't actually do that from Sherman and Williams. I'd have to go over to Grant, use that ramp, go over to where Umpqua Bank is, and then come back up Park Street, and there is no curb cuts going down Sherman Street. And I know that's the way a lot of the side streets are going into town. So I think that would be for strollers and for people with wheelchairs and just, you know, bikes even. But I know that's difficult with the infrastructure and the cost of it, costs for that, and I know, and I know at one point, Ron, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that it was when there were construction projects at those places, then curb cuts would be put in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that might be something we may need to target, but we'd also need money for that too.
Plus, we need to empower like 500 senior citizens to ticket people who are using those ramps with their bikes. Because that ticks me off. You know what? Those are, those ramps are not for your bike or your skateboard. Pick those up, walk them when you're downtown, so that is education.
We'll get you out there with the ticket booking.
Yes, yes, that is an education piece that needs to be out there.
You mentioned safe school routes. Now, we've got a real bad situation out here from Weldwood for the kids going to Seven Oaks. And at present, through the council of government that I belong to, there's a Connect Oregon grant available for, with quite a bit of money involved for different projects. Now, the listings that they came up with, they had that project as medium priority. But after our meeting last week, it's moved to high priority. So we might have a chance to get some help there. I hold.
Excellent.
Yeah. So being that that lies in the county, not the city, how do you guys work with the county and?
We are specifically limited, as an advisory board, to the city of Lebanon.
To the city. But you don't have any interaction with, does Lynn County have an agency similar to what you guys do, or?
To my knowledge, at this point, we have not interacted with the county level.
Do you know if they have a transportation committee?
This is through ODOT.
Okay.
So, I think that covers it.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, next up, public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding cities' business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute any written comments that you might have at speaker's request. Sure anyone from the public that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seen none, we'll move on. Number one, health reimbursement account agreement by Dean Baugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we were notified here a couple of weeks ago that our, due to the ACA, which is the American Healthcare Act, that, out there, there's some changes coming to HRA plans. Back in 2000, when was it? 2011, the council authorized the city to start an HRA plan with health reimbursement agreements with our employees, which, there's money put aside out of, through the union contracts to, for employees to use for deductibles on their health plans. They can, and the way the HRA works is, once the money's in there, this is the employee's money, and it goes on forever. So, you know, when they leave, when they leave employment here in 30 years, that's their account, stick with them. Due to the changes in the healthcare plan, the current standard plan we have, everybody's in it, everybody can currently use it. With the changes, we now have to split our HRA into two different plans. One, a standard plan, which will be pretty much exactly what we have right now. Second one will be a post-separation plan. And what this is for, is for any employees who opt out of our insurance plan, which currently we have three, which means they have insurance through their spouse someplace else. They cannot opt out unless they're covered by insurance someplace else. So if they opt out of our insurance plan, they need to go into the post-separation plan, which means we still put money aside for them, but they're not allowed to use it until they either retire or they leave the city service. And the reason for this is, is the interpretation is, with the new healthcare acts, you cannot put a limit on, a limit on how much money can be spent on health and health coverage, you know, like usually it's a million dollars a year now in most health plans, that goes away. Well, by nature, they look at HRAs as being a limited healthcare plan, because it's limited to the amount of money that's actually deposited into it. So, they have to tie it to being enrolled in a healthcare plan. So we have to separate our plan into two. So that's what we're proposing here, a standard plan, and then a, what they call a post-separation plan. So in the packet today, we've got the employer adoption agreement, which is the same form we did a couple of years ago, but they've added the section on the, the post-separation All it says is that, all we're saying is, yes, we're gonna have that plan, yes, just like our standard plan, as soon as the money's put in, the employee's vested, you know, they don't have to wait five years to become vested in it, so as soon as the money's in, they can turn it around and use it for their, for their health stuff. So we're not changing anything, except adopting the new plan as required. I do have one thing here. On page 12 of 18 of the, the health, the new plan, somehow, down there at the bottom, number two, where it says Debbie Schimman and her phone number and that proposed adoption thing, I filled that in and said, "Ask me and exempt employees," and somehow, when I closed it and opened it back up, it grabbed something from someplace else in the document. So, when I opened it back up and sent it to the clerk's office, it filled these in. So those two lines really should say, "Ask me and exempt." So we need to make that change. Page 12 of 18 in the employer adoption agreement. It should say, "Ask me and exempt." The Teamsters are covered by, they're through an HRA plan through the Teamsters Union, so they're not in this plan right here. So I'm assuming the Teamsters Union, they'll create their own separation agreement, and they'll do that over there, how they're done. You see where it says Debbie Schimman's email address here at the bottom? On page 12 of 18? Those two lines where it says Debbie Schimman and adopted proposed, should say, "Ask me and exempt."
Yeah.
So somewhere, it just grabbed it from someplace else in the document when I, when I did something. And I didn't see it till they printed the report. So that would be the end of our, oh, I also want to say, we did talk to the union members, I talked to the union president, and I've also talked to the three employees who this does affect, and explained it to them. We did send a letter to the union, I got a note back saying that they're, they understand it, they're, they're okay with this. So we've covered, taken care of the union side too with that. So we have that memo in our file. They've explained to them they understand. So if there's, yes, sir.
Dean, this may be a tiny bit out of order. I don't particularly have a problem with anything you've presented here. My question is, I'm fairly familiar personally with the health savings accounts. I'm not familiar with the HRA, and I don't know if now, if anybody else has that question, maybe just a brief description of that concept, or maybe do it for me after the meeting.
When you have a health savings account, they have to be tied to a, I think it's, I believe it's a high, a high deductible plan. With the HRA, you don't have to have that high deductible plan, it's, it's separate. So we can have them with our low deductible plans, our high deductible, and the way we, like I said, the way we've chosen, we've checked the box saying that you're vested immediately, and the money stays with the employee when they leave.
And that's a tax-exempt account?
And these are tax, yes. The money goes in here, it's tax exempt.
So it's similar to an HS, just different uses?
It's the same name, different name. It's like having a 457 plan, a 403, a 401. They're all the same, they just have different names.
It doesn't have the restrictions, you don't have to use it within a certain time, it has to be used by the end of the fiscal year.
Similar kind of thing with just different parameters.
And then the employee can use it for post-retirement healthcare, you know, whatever they want.
Yeah, so this continues on, so if you, if you don't use it, so you just build it up, so when you retire, then you've got money there to pay Medicare, Medicaid, whatever, it can be used for all that.
So we're kind of creating an account for people who didn't have one before. So we're, we're creating an account for the, the post-separation accounts, which we didn't have before.
Right now, the, we have two people that are exempt that are in this. It's really bizarre, so, and I don't want to get into detail, but, so the exempt employees have had this for, since the beginning. You know, we've, we've had this created. So, any money we put in, right now, like, so like, so if I was opted out, I have an HRA plan, so I'll have that. As of January 1/14, I'll have two plans. One, standard plan, one, post-separation. I can continue to use the money that's in my standard plan. My post-separation one would then have to just, it would have to, it would grow until I go away.
So monetarily, for the city, it's the same?
It's the same.
It's, it's what we were doing, it's just, it just looks different for me as an employee because the laws have changed.
Right, yeah, there's, there's no additional cost. We still spend 13, 37, 25 per employee for, for insurance. It either goes towards insurance or towards their HRAs, the kind of way we, we negotiated. Now, I will say, the only other caveat here is for the Ask Me employees, their HRA did not start until March 13th of this year. So, that one employee in Ask Me has to immediately go into a post-separation. Because if your plan was in place before January 1/13, you'll end up with two. If it's after January 1/13, which our Ask Me employees were, they immediately go into a post-separation. So whatever's put into that person's is post-separation, they can't use it now.
None of which do we have control over?
No.
This is all?
Yeah, they sent all the stuff saying?
There's no point in a no vote. That's what I meant, this is pretty much.
I guess if you said no?
I'm just stuck, theoretically.
You could, and then what we'd have to do is say, then we don't want a post-separation plan, we stay with the standard, and we don't allow employees to opt out. That, that's all we could do. Or if you want to opt out, you don't get an HRA.
All right.
So, so there is, something could happen if you say no.
I wasn't gonna vote no, don't freak out, mayor.
But that's the op, there's that option there. It can happen. There is an option. So if there's no other question, that's the end of the, the report.
Any other questions? Rebecca?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grizzle. Okay, seen none, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution number 2013-32.
Resolution number 2013-32, a resolution adopting changes to employer adoption agreement for both the standard and post-separation healthcare reimbursement plans.
Move for approval.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 2013-32. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2013-32 passes. Okay, proposed utility collection process procedures. The city manager, would you like to speak on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council has directed, we're moving forward on reexamining our water billing and collection procedures, and are revamping those. This is an ordinance that will go with those revamped procedures. However, there's still some legal issues that the city attorney is researching, and at this particular time, I would ask that we table this till the next meeting, when we can clear up those legal issues.
Okay. Have a motion?
We need, I move to table this to the next meeting.
Second. It's been moved in second to table the proposed utility collection process and procedures. Those all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, number two, proposed utility collection process has been tabled. And lastly, and I didn't get to welcome you, welcome to our new city manager, Dana, his first meeting.
Woo-hoo!
Great to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
And you've been a little bit busy.
Trying to be, the tiny man.
And we'll go with your city manager's report.
I'd just say, you know, I remember sitting back where Jason is roughly a month and a half, two months ago, watching the panel, so it's nice to be on, on this side. The things that I think are important is, one, right before I started, there was a minor discharge from our wastewater treatment plant, and I think the council's been made aware of it, but there are representatives from CH2M, our plant operators here tonight, Craig, and from basically corporate headquarters, Brian, who used to manage the plant, Nathan, who I believe is now going to manage the plant, and I've just asked them to come give a brief presentation as to exactly what happened, and explain to the council why it won't happen again, and to answer any questions council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and city council. My name is Nathan Walker, and I am the plant supervisor here at the Lebanon Wastewater Treatment Plant. Before I begin my presentation on what happened, I'd like to give a quick summary on how a treatment plant works, and why, why what happened happened, and how it didn't work as, as it should. All right, first, wastewater treatment plants. Thank you. Treat wastewater, or sewage, and here in this picture on the left, the, the raw wastewater enters the wastewater treatment plant, where there are bacteria and microorganisms, we'll just call them bugs, where they are given air, and then the food- given air, and then the food from the wastewater, where they consume those nutrients, the food, and to treat it, then they are passed on to a clarifier, here on the right, where the solids are separated, the bugs are separated, they, gravity pulls them down, they go to the bottom, and then the clear water, the treated water, leaves the clarifier and moves on to disinfection, while the bugs are then pumped back and recirculated into the aeration basin. The bugs, as they consume food, they grow and multiply, and a portion of them must be removed from the system, and this is done, and here in Lebanon, we actually waste out or remove these bugs, and they're used as fertilizer, this is known as biosolids, and this is what people often refer as sludge, but it's actually just the bodies of the microorganisms. Our plant, we have two ways to waste or to remove those bugs, there's the valve on the right, and then there's the valve at the bottom. To waste or remove the bugs, you would need to open one of the two valves, but never both, and what happened during the incident on August 16th, the operator who was attempting to put a clarifier in service, opened both valves mistakenly, forcing and drawing the solids, the bugs, back into the clarifier, where they eventually left the clarifier, went through the disinfection process, and then were discharged into the river. So the plant upset, the consequences of the upset, there was not a spill, it was a discharge through the permitted discharge point, and it did pass through all of the processes, including disinfection. However, DEQ was notified, the Department of Environmental Quality was notified of the event, and they issued, or requested that we issue a precautionary notice. We issued it to the public radio stations, to public radio stations locally here, I attempted to issue it to the newspaper, but they couldn't get it out till Monday, which was after the concern would have already been passed, and the concern was for people using the river. The estimated loss of bugs or solids from the system, we believe is within the permitted limits, but we don't know because they weren't measured, it was not a sampling period, and there were no observed changes in the water quality of the river, no one noticed any plumes or anything moving downstream, and also, just to give you a scale, our wastewater effluent here in Lebanon makes up less than 1% of the South Santiam River. The operations protocol in Lebanon, for each major procedure like this, there is a written protocol, which was not followed, the all-plant operators are trained, and they're certified by the state, we like to hire educated operators, we, an example is the LBCC school here in Lebanon, they have a wastewater and water treatment technology program, we like to hire students from that program or other programs, because they know how these systems work, they are fairly complex. And finally, operators who do, who do work in the plant, do perform these procedures with oversight the first time, and this operator did do that. The operator who caused the upset was put on administrative leave for a time, he's been removed from operational duties and is undergoing retraining. All operators at the plant have since been retrained on the proper procedure, as well as what happened that was done incorrectly. The valve has been labeled with a warning indicating, when this valve is open, the other one must be closed, and we are in the process of installing an early warning turbidometer on the effluent, so that the particulate starts to leave the plant at a level that's of concern, we'll get an alarm in the middle of the night, or weekends, anything like that. And finally, we believe the incident was an isolated incident, and we have no reason to believe that it will happen again, and we've put several things in place to prevent it from happening again. Any questions? If not, I would like to invite all of you to make a trip out to the wastewater treatment plant, we are really proud of what we do out there, and the good work that we do do, you know, 364 days of the year, so, just one mistake, really.
The question I have is, if this happened again, is there a better, or have you worked with the city to get a better communications plan, so that we can get it out to the community? Because, you know, notifying two radio stations, not everybody's gonna listen to those stations. I know the paper can't always get it out, I know we have a weekly paper, so it's difficult on that, but we have Facebook, we have a lot of other communications options that would be important, I think, to...
Yes, we recently met with Ron Whitlatch, the engineering services manager, and we did design a protocol that they will be notified, the city staff, so that they can move forward, and then they'll, I believe, put you then in direct connection with that notice.
Good.
It sounds to me like a pretty isolated occurrence, I mean, if you look back over 20 years, how often is this kind of thing, how many incidents we're talking about, like one or two, or is it an isolated one?
Yeah, Councilor, I've been here since, well, 11 years now, and we've never had this happen. Again, the valve is for wasting purposes only, the operator's actually putting the clarifier online to get the RAS pump started, which is, again, to take those bugs or bodies back up. He opens his valve, and again, it's not in the SOP, not really sure why, so I, again, very isolated.
Sure.
Shouldn't have happened, and obviously, he feels really bad, but things happen.
Well, sure, and the consequences aren't enormous, in this case, kind of thing?
Okay.
Yeah, there's no fines or penalties, in fact, DEQ, when we first contacted them, they just wanted us to put it in the monthly report, as a note in bottom, they called us back several hours later, and thought we probably should put it in the health advisory, just due to the type, time of year it is, summertime use, there is really no public access downstream for several miles, or as, you know, residents, so that's really what brought it, we really, just the due diligence and good ethics to report it in a true place, so.
Yeah, just would hate to see, I mean, it sounds like the steps you've taken make a lot of sense procedurally, but I'd hate to see a huge, big overhead of procedures put in place based on an incident like this.
Yeah, even earlier, we had another slide, and I was gonna say, there's probably well over 100 valves that could cause the same problems.
Yeah.
At either one of the facilities, the water or the wastewater facility. The other thing is, the turbidometer that we're putting on is now kind of a standard design in new plants. Again, our plant was designed in 1977, I believe, and we've had upgrades, obviously, since you guys have done it, but that has never been an issue.
Now, is that meter water, is that gonna meter the water in the river, or is that gonna...
The effluent leaving the plant.
Going out, okay.
So we have limits that we can put out there.
Okay.
Which are within EPA and DEQ regulations, that'll, we'll set that limit at a low level, so right now, we're putting four bugs per million out, if you would, which is really clean water, clean in the river water currently, we'll probably set that, if our permit's at 10, we might, and we're running about six or so, we might put it at eight, so we get a really early, something's going wrong in our face, and that'll give our operator a call out, and we can log on and see what's going on from him.
Okay.
And I think you said this, Nathan, but that is, when you're, we've got that monitor, that's your computer control system, that's 24/7 monitoring, that's somewhere there, alarm, set point that you can set, and then dial up to an operator, get an immediate response.
Yeah, and we have people on call 24/7, the chain of all eight of us.
I appreciate the dumbed-down version of the document, that really helped me, because I could see exactly what the process was, and I appreciate that.
Oh, good, we thought that would help.
Yeah.
And again, I'd like to just back up on what Nathan said, you guys have invested, or the council, the city has invested in a lot of money in upgrades at the facility that we're really proud of and thankful for, just want to say, we'd love to have you out there, I know Councilor Grisell's been out there, and Jason Boland, and I don't know if Mr. Elliott's been out there in the past, we really are proud of what you guys have done, the plant works great, and we do have almost every tool in our toolbox to make it work, so.
Have you been out there, Perry?
No, but I'd like to.
Yeah, you need to do it.
Barry, I'd recommend going on a nice, cool winter's day. Not a day like today.
I understand what you're talking about.
All right, no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, another update we had regarding kind of an environmental incident, was during part of the construction, related to the construction of the new reservoir, the new south reservoir, there was a minor incident that I'd like Ron Whitlatch to talk to, and he's here to address council regarding that incident.
Thanks, Dana, Mayor, and Council. So, as you recall, last Thursday, we had a little bit of rain in town, actually quite a bit of rain, just to give you a snapshot, if you don't already know, we got about 2.7 inches in 24 hours, that's a, that's a, I don't know if that's record, I didn't look into it that deep, but the one thing...
It was awesome.
Yeah, it was.
It wasn't record.
Okay. The biggest thing was, we got about 0.7 inches in 20 minutes, so, we had some localized flooding, the, most of which was caused by inundation to our system, we didn't have any plugs anywhere, so, kudos to our maintenance guys who were out there keeping the system clean, and it went away pretty quick. The one problem that we did have is with the South History Waterline that we're constructing, our contractor had it cut open in order to make a tie-in, and we drained all of the ditches off of Von Road into our trench with a cut-open water line. Unfortunately, there was really no seeing that happen, they had pumps there, just couldn't keep up, you know, with that kind of rainfall. So we ended up doing a bunch of flushing on Friday, did two folks with a boil water notice over the weekend, our test, our first initial test, which we tested out of a hydrant, which we typically would know is not gonna produce good results, but being that's the only spot that we had to test in a short timeframe in order to get the test over for sampling, came back positive for total coliform, coliform is just an indicator bacteria, it's not anything that's, that says that the water's bad, it tested negative for E. coli, which is, which is the bad one. So, we re-flushed and redid all that Monday, and retested, and everything's back to normal, citizens are back in water, and I think we're moving up the hill. So, that's kind of an update on the storm and what happened there, but for the most part, we weathered it fairly well.
That's just luck of the draw, to have that open.
Yeah, I mean, any other time, and they were prepared for it, I mean, they had pumps out, and, but when you get that kind of groundwater, we were out there when it was happening.
And nobody on the planet was prepared for that storm, this time of year, in Oregon, I mean, that was Tennessee, or I don't even know where you get that kind of storm, I loved it, but Florida, yeah, Venezuela, I've seen storms like that, but yeah.
It was definitely wet, pretty intense, so, but our system weathered it pretty well for that kind of inundation, so.
All right, thanks, Ron. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to highlight, you know, I got to go out there with Ron and Jason, and their crews were just exemplary, and the two of them were exemplary in their response and dealing with the citizen, and it's kind of indicative of the staff that I've met to this point, and it kind of transitions nicely into the next one, which I think is a matter of importance, and I think Audrey has reported about this, but I want it to be more broadly known, and that is the future of Chief Stevenson. Chief Stevenson and I have met, and we've talked about his status as acting interim chief, and while I've heard tremendous things, and experienced tremendous things to this point, I think you've brought me in to exercise my independent judgment, and Chief and I have said that it would be best to create a six-month period, where we're creating a plan of his vision for the force, and how that fits in with our vision of the city going forward, we're meeting at least one, two times a week to review that, he's doing an excellent job in that, and at the end of that six-month period, he and I will sit down and determine, one, if he wants to keep working with me, and if we think he's the right person, and I certainly anticipate, and he anticipates, that will be the case, but at least at that point, I'll be able to exercise my independent judgment, and not just take the word of what other people have to say, so, that'll be the status moving forward, and he'll continue as the official acting chief of police for the next six months, and then we'll be able to move forward from there.
I want to say, I think that is a really wise course of action, when I was reading your, your report, and beyond that, I love this report, and I, I love knowing what's going on with every, with every department, and I was thinking, as I was reading it, I think they do so much, if I had to report everything I did, I think I'd lose my job, I don't think I'm doing half as much of this, and so, I really appreciate all of your, what your staff is doing and reporting on, I love, I love it, so.
Thank you, and they do most of the work, they provide the notes, and Jamie puts it into the great format that there is, and our goal is, after every council meeting, that will be published on our webpage, so the public can see what we're reporting to the council every month.
It's really informative, if people want to know what is going on in the city, if they do nothing else but read that, they will learn a lot.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I very much appreciate this, and I hope we continue.
I intend to.
Yes, good.
Did you have any other highlights that you wanted to pull out, or?
You know, everything else is fairly self-explanatory, I don't think there's anything else that really needs to be...
Don't read it.
Drawn to attention, yeah, I'm not gonna read through it, everybody else can read. We do have a very smart town, and I know that people can read, so.
Excellent. Okay, next up, items from council, do we have anything from councils?
Well, I, a couple things, just to, I know we didn't, we tabled the issue on the rate collection process, on the water, the utility collection process, which I think is just fine, and the conversations we've had date on that, I'm very much in line with, so I don't want to have comments on that, but I know we've talked in times past about two other issues with respect to water issues, and that's summer rate schedules and standby rates, these are continuing to be brought up to me by various citizens in town, and I don't really need to have a big conversation about tonight, but I'd like to get on the table as an agenda conversation, to have council really look into the possibilities and the pros and cons of those two items.
I know that was discussed late last year in the council, before we were on council...
That's the only comment I have tonight.
Okay.
I'd just like to raise that issue and say I'd like to...
Bring it up for discussion.
To research and discuss those items.
I'm willing to discuss it again.
Okay.
I'd like to look at some data behind them and just really take a good look at that again.
Anything else? I have a couple, a couple things, I got an extremely nice note here, and I wanted to read it, August 10th, "Dear Mr. Mayor, please excuse my delinquency in getting this note to you, I wanted to know how much I appreciate the hospitality you and your city citizens, the hospitality of you and your city citizens, when I was visiting last month and interviewing for the position of city manager. I very much enjoyed the experience and think you've got a wonderful person in charge, Dana, and as your city manager. I wish him all the best, and your city the best of luck. Thanks again, Peter Trotson."
Pretty classy.
I was pretty impressed with that. That was the Coast Guard gentleman from New York.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Flash camera.
Okay. And lastly, before we close, I would like to bring attention to someone who doesn't like to get very much attention.
Yay, it's me, isn't it?
Linda. Oh, no, no, you get plenty of attention.
Oh, turn it.
Linda has been with the city for 25 years, and she's now upset at me, and everybody else.
I'd like to see documentation on that.
It's a...
I mean, I'm serious, I don't think you look old enough to meet that record, so...
Most everybody here...
That must have been it.
I think most everybody here has met Linda, knows Linda, and if not, she's been around for a while in our city, and she's worked a lot of different positions, and she's our city recorder, and when I was on planning commission, she was, you worked with us and did our minutes, and she's just a fantastic person to work with, and we wanted to give her a little recognition and thank you for all her service, and what an awesome person, because I know that all the employees look up to you and look to you for information, and just being a caring person, so, thank you for all your service.
Woo!
And for those of you that have sat through our meeting, we're gonna have a little bit of cake after, if you'd like to have a piece of cake, too. And lastly, we'll do public comments, if there's anyone additionally that would like to make a public comment?
Oh, boy.
Oh, no, oh, no.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Since we're gonna be spending six months observing Frank's behavior, I want to give him a great big compliment.
I'm sorry, could you tell us your name, please?
My name is Shelley Gerd, and I'm the director of the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce, and we had a lot of need for the police of late, and I have to tell you, the experiences I've had with our Lebanon Police Department have been so good, we were broken into, and I think I surprised him, and when I came in the front door, he was running down the parking lot, the crew that the police sent over were so nice, one was a fairly new police officer, and he was learning to do these investigations, he was so polite, and the best part, and you have to understand, as I get older, which you point out constantly, things like this really affect you emotionally, when you've been kind of violated, and I, the more I thought about it, the scarier I got, and they were so kind to kind of calm me down and reassure me, like I was their mom, and you know what, I really needed that, they were so respectful, when they left, I felt really safe, and I don't think people usually feel safe once they've been, you know, violated like that, but they were so wonderful, and they did, I felt like they really investigated, we've had other break-ins, but this was something that I, it was like TV, and I was so proud of them. And then this weekend, I was so mad when I came to work, I, our reader board, which was donated to us from the River Center, we love that reader board, because we can spread the word about what's happening, and all the letters were off, and I said, darn it, the darn vandals, and then what am I gonna do, and Mary and I were out there in the field, I found one end, and we were looking in the river and trying to... river and trying to go down into the canal to see if we could find our letters, and I said, because they're old, they're obsolete. I said, oh, anything, and we had it full, because we had a whole lot of stuff, and I was so upset. I got a phone call about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock from the police. Some of the kids had been very inappropriate with the letters, and they'd moved them around. They haven't told me what it said. I don't want to know. So, they, rather than just, you know, leave it there, which, we've had this happen before, they, the police officer stopped and took all the letters down and brought them to us. And I was so, I didn't care about what had been written, I was just so glad to see our letters back. But how thoughtful is that? You have a very thoughtful police department, and you lead by example in an organization like that. So I'm going to continue to tell you when he does wonderful things and when his people, so that you can put that in your list for the six months. What a difference, and what an impression, and how good they've made our community feel. And that's my personal experience. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Shelley.